Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. We have one topic to cover in our work session this evening, and then we'll move into our Town Board meeting thereafter. So the topic that we're covering in work session tonight is a presentation of a new draft of our proposed leaf blower legislation. And we're joined this evening by our Sustainability Advisory Board and Rand Manassi, who has been leading this initiative on their behalf. So Rand, do you want to explain to us the changes that the Town Board is looking at in comparison with the previous version?
Sure. Thank you for letting us present tonight. And the changes that we're presenting are rather simple. We've had a meeting with Jill and some others from the town, as well as the Nick and the legal team, the town attorney. And we made changes around the areas, as we talked about last, of the exemptions. Remove the 10-acre exemption and put in a list of exemptions. And the listed exemptions we can find in the law. And I do have, if you want me to share a screen, I do have a revised list. If I can do that, give me a second, and I'll try to switch over to it. Just got to figure out which one of these screens it is. It's this one here, I believe. So it might be easy to look at this one. Hopefully, I got this right, just a few minutes ago. So the exemptions now are the Chappaqua School Districts, recreational fields, tennis courts, country clubs, tennis courts, homeowners associations, tennis courts, swimming clubs, tennis courts, golf courses, cemeteries, as well as the activities and the equipment of the town of Newcastle. So instead of being the 10-acre-plus exemption that we had previously, it's a listed exemption, and it's only those exemptions. And then the other change was the noise restrictions. We had 70 dB or greater was a noise restriction. We've now made that align with the restrictions of the town's current noise ordinance on domestic tools. But otherwise, it stays the same as we saw when we looked at it a couple of weeks ago. We also aligned, though, the time slots to align the town ordinance on domestic tools to align with what we've proposed in the leaf blower environmental protection law. In other words, the Monday through Friday, seasonal limitations, being Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturdays, just want to make sure I got my summer screen to be accurate as to what the law says. Saturdays, 9:00 to 8:00, and Sundays, 9:00 to 4:00. And then off-season, I believe that is 8:00 to 8:00. Saturdays is 8:00. I believe those are not accurate to what the law says, now that I'm thinking about it.
Sorry, you believe what? I missed what you said.
I believe that the off-season should be the same as is on a season.
So can I ask a question about this, actually? So Nick, from a legal perspective, why does this legislation make any reference at all to the noise levels or to the hours of operation if we've now just made this consistent with the other areas of the town code?
You know, I was looking at that in preparation for tonight's meeting. I think it can come out now that it's gone through all these different changes. Because we're not doing anything separately, differently than what's already permitted in the noise ordinance. It can come out.
Right. I thought it did.
No, it's in the final, it's in the version that we presented back to you on Friday. Yeah, and the matrix here is inaccurate. The October 1st to May 31st should align with June 1st to September 30th. But that does align to what you have in the domestic noise and the rest of tools, noise ordinance. So we will strike that, or should strike that.
Rand?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I probably should have called you about this. But what is the rationale for exempting the whole town of Newcastle as opposed to aligning it maybe with CCSD saying the recreational fields and tennis courts?
So actually, Lisa, that was our suggestion.
I feel funny making this, you know, restriction for everybody except the town.
Okay.
And if we want to say it makes sense for playgrounds, you know, recreation fields, et cetera, then I think I have no problem with that. But to just say for all activities seems not right.
So the request was actually, as a result of, it was the town's request of SAB. I'm not sure that they were very gracious about including it. I'm not sure that they were particularly thrilled about it. But the original text of the statute exempts DPW's activities. What we realized through speaking with staff is that Ike's department, Parks, is the one who is really responsible for taking care of our fields, the couple of tennis courts that we have, but more importantly, the sidewalks, the maintenance of the sidewalk in our downtown, or the parking lots, things like that. Those are all Parks activities, not DPW. So technically, we can change it so that it reads DPW and Parks. That we would be fine with that, but basically, that is the town's operations. We need to be able to use blowers to be able to maintain our parking lots, our sidewalks, in addition to our rec fields.
And I'm deferring to the town on this.
Yeah. But in all fairness, that it's not really Rand's to explain. It's ours. And I do have Ike present, can explain it to you. But, you know, as we sit and we take a look at our maintenance, this is how we maintain, and until the leaf blowers are, you know, just because we have the ability to use leaf blowers doesn't mean that the town isn't trying to be greener. And it doesn't mean that we're not going to try to limit our use of leaf blowers and be mindful of the spirit of the legislation. But at the end of the day, as we do invite the public onto our premises, our sidewalks, our parking lots, and our fields, we feel that the liability has to be the top priority and the safety of the people that we're inviting in, our residents and, you know, visitors to our town. And we have to be able to keep it safe.
Ike, how often are you blowing the tennis courts?
We only have two of them.
It's, I mean, it depends, but it's at a minimal, it's weekly. That we go in and clean them off just because of all the trees and everything, the surrounding areas.
And what, and how long does it take you guys to do that?
To blow the tennis courts?
Yeah.
Half hour.
Is there any other comparable job that requires blowing that is similar in terms of time?
No, I mean, everything else is pretty, pretty big. I mean, when it comes to landscaping, a lot of it's done to clean up. So after we're done mowing and weed whacking, instead of leaving all that stuff around on the roadways and the sidewalks and the paths and stuff like that, the guys will go through and blow. And then obviously, fall cleanup. And then the downtown, the Hamlet areas, both in Millwood and Chappaqua, you know, the guys go out early morning before everybody gets in for work and the traffic starts and all the commuter traffic. They go out and will clean the sidewalks and parking lots, so.
I'd assume the sidewalks are not, for lack of a better term, a heavy lift.
Not during the spring and summer, but the fall is, you know, when we go through and we do a pretty good cleaning. I would say a half a dozen times throughout the, throughout the fall before the snow comes.
But it's, yeah, I mean, it's exempted from October 1.
Well, our other concern was the time constraints and the noise constraints as well. So because none of, you know, we're out before 8:00 a.m. and none of our equipment meets that 70 dB.
A 70 dB has been stricken.
Okay, well, so. I just, the big thing is, we just wanted to make sure we weren't violating any of our own rules that we were putting out there with the times that we're out, the equipment that we're using, and the things that we're working on. Because like Jill said, it's not just rec fields and playgrounds and tennis courts. I mean, we handle the sidewalks and some of the stuff along the roadways as well.
Yeah.
And parking lots, parking lots.
I just think it's, it's like a hard ask to say none of our equipment complies, so we're exempted. But we're expecting all of our residents to purchase new equipment or to have their landscapers do that. And I get the public purpose for it, but I think it's just, it's a hard ask to say we don't need to comply because our equipment doesn't comply. And we want our sidewalks clean, but, you know, residents, you have to kind of buy everything new and deal with your sidewalks not being clean.
But they don't have any sidewalks.
Or walks or driveways or anything else.
But it's, it's a difference in the, I don't know, I'm not sure that like, I think it was German, it was like a heavy lifting. You know, I mean, it's a difference in what the homeowner is doing in their driveway and what we're doing in parking lots and roadways in our parks and, you know, those large-scale areas. You know, and the equipment out there right now, just, we can't scale down yet to meet those needs, you know? I don't think the equipment's there yet for us to do that.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm saying, should we look at this even more and so that it doesn't seem like we're kind of saying we don't have to comply with our own law? Is there a little more leeway we should be giving than private residents if we? I don't know, I'm just kind of talking.
I mean, I know it's not written in there, but we also don't use the stuff just to use it. And we do minimize as much as we can, especially with the leaf blowers. You know, we're not running them all day long, but we do need them and, you know, when we need them.
And I think one of the defenses, Ike, you're going to need to stand up, what someone's going to need to stand up for is that it's not for the look or the cleanliness of it, it's from the liability side of it.
Right. That was also a big part of the discussion.
You can't be blowing hardscape to make it look clean. You have to be blowing hardscape because you're worried about the liability of somebody slipping on a leaf. Now, that becomes an issue, though, during summer, to say, I think, and you have to correct me if I'm wrong, to say that you're blowing grass clippings off of hardscape because you think that's a liability.
It could be on the walkways. It certainly could be on the walkways. You know, if that stuff piles up, it gets slippery when it rains. You know, it doesn't take much for somebody to slip and fall and then, you know.
We have to consider the train parking lot. Is that something you should be blowing? I'm not here to answer the questions. I'm just here to raise that as an obstacle.
It's the issue, yeah.
So may I suggest, Ike, and tell me your thoughts, and this is, I think we all need to chime in. If you used electric on a two, two tennis courts, which is not that much, I'd assume much of the sidewalk is not heavy lifting. It's probably blowable with electric. I don't know about the ball fields, but would you, do you think it's doable to use electric in that limited capacity?
Not yet.
Why do you say that?
I just.
I think of, I think of a tennis court that is flat, hardscape, and, you know, you could, electric, it can be pretty strong to blow it off. Why do you think that wouldn't work?
Just from talking to people that are using it, they haven't had, it's just not as efficient. I know, I shouldn't say efficient because, so, but from our standpoint, it's not efficient when we're trying to get the work done. And when we do get the big piles, because those grass clippings do add up. I mean, you know, a lot of those times with the group that we have now, we're on a two, almost three-week cycle with the landscaping. So by the time you get through to some of these areas, that stuff gets thick. And, you know, trying to clear those walkways, and it's a long walkway, you know? We're trying to, those sidewalks aren't just short little areas that we're, that we're working on.
Excuse me, I've got personal experience using the electric leaf blowers. My son bought me one for Christmas, and I've got a very short sidewalk. It's probably four feet wide by 20 feet long. I've got a very short driveway. It's about 10 feet wide by 80 feet long. I can't even clean my sidewalk or driveway on one charge. Can't be done. So I know from personal experience, I love the electric blower, but just doesn't have the staying power.
So what if we did something a little different, just to sort of pick up on Lisa's comment earlier? I think what felt, not to put words in your mouth, Lisa, but from my perspective, what I heard you say was that, you know, this carte blanche sort of exemption for the town felt like we were being sort of overly generous and not holding ourselves to the same standards as we were going to hold others to. So what if instead of saying just sort of all activities and equipment of the town of Newcastle, what if we said that the town of Newcastle had an exemption for the maintenance of the tennis courts, the ball fields, and the sidewalks? Then we reinsert the language that spoke about the DPW operations with regard to sort of maintenance of, you know, the roads and so on and those uses. And then I believe that there was also in their language that spoke to the fact that if there was a municipal operation for which we needed an exemption, that that exemption would be granted by DPW on a case-by-case basis. But so I guess my proposal is, rather than having it just say all things for the town of Newcastle, that we were specific, these are the things that we need to use it for. We know the tennis courts, we know the ball fields. Is that other thing, the, you know, sidewalks and, you know, and walkways? And then we leave it at that.
What about parking lots?
Well, so parking lots is an interesting question. And so my suggestion is, is that if we're serious about this, and again, you know, we're only talking June to September, then, um, well, the one option is that Jerry gets to do it, and it's exempted.
Thank you.
Or if, you know, we sort of readjust public expectations as to cleanliness that, you know, we're not going to be blowing the large parking lots, you know, to get grass clippings off. And, you know, this is, this is the price we pay for trying to be a little greener in our thinking. And there'll be a couple of grass clippings. And, you know, obviously, if it's a slip hazard or fall hazard, we'll take and we'll clean it up. We're still going to do street sweeping operations. But maybe the public gets used to the fact that there's a couple of grass clippings around, and that's okay. Why don't, why don't we see, why don't we try and see if it's an issue with that? And because the flip side of that, Ike, is that then you're not going to be responsible to maintain to that level anymore.
Right. I mean, if that, listen, you know, I've said from the get-go, whatever the ultimate decision is, we'll abide by it. I just want to make sure that everybody is prepared for any phone calls, emails, that sort of thing. And then the questions don't fall back on our department. So, you know, I just, as long as we're all in the same understanding, I have no problem with passing this along to my staff once it's, you know, put in motion. But I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as to what that expectation is.
Or even alternatively, if we don't go to that full extent, how many times again do you do, for example, getting parking lots back?
Every time, every time we mow, we, the guys will clean up around the perimeter.
And that's a cycle you set every two to three weeks?
That's every, that's actually, once, we make sure we hit the hotspots, Gdynne and Millwood and some of the other more high-traffic areas once a week.
And the alternative is to just do the regular blowing less and not do it every time you mow it? In other words, once every, you know, three weeks, once every other week, once every month?
Well, they won't be able to do it, they won't be able to do it at all from June to September.
The thing I don't want to do is I don't want, I don't want to add more layers to this where it gets more difficult for my guys to understand what they're supposed to be doing on a weekly basis. So whatever the end legislation is, that's fine, you know? For not doing parking lots, we're not doing parking lots. But, you know, I don't want it to be kind of like, well, we're only doing this parking lot one, you know, every other week, but we're doing this parking lot every week. And, you know, it just, that's, that's too much, too much to keep track of. And, you know, so, you know, I always like to simplify it as best as I can, but, you know. And I think I made this comment last time, well, we can forego some of that stuff. My Parks Foreman might tweak out a little bit, leaving things kind of what he deems messy, but, you know.
Explain Jonathan.
Yeah, yeah. But whatever, whatever you guys want, I mean, listen, we'll, we'll do what we need to do. But, yeah, whatever you guys want in the end.
Is there, is there a pathway for us as a town to be able to start the transition to electric blowers? Or at least some electric blowers? Like what, what could that path look like? Are we, you know, years away from, from starting that path or months? Or I just can't picture what that looks like.
Based on my experience, I'm having an electric blower at home here. I'd say we're four or five years away because the battery packs just don't last.
They're not, yeah, they're not there on a commercial level yet.
Correct.
With all respect, there is that gentleman that I brought in a couple of years ago to help us start this process, who is working with towns to help them transition into electric usage for towns. He's worked with the town of Southampton. He's worked with a number of towns throughout the country. And he is available at a pretty nominal rate to advise the towns on how to make the transition.
Are there any towns in Westchester that use electric?
I don't recall if he's worked with any towns to do that. I know Scarsdale, I had thought had done it. Ike, you had kind of a conversation with them.
Yeah, they're not.
They, they told you a different.
Right. You know, what I've seen mostly, like talking to some of the other departments is, you know, a lot of them are trying to put in some sort of leaf blower legislation. They haven't quite got to the all-electric yet, you know? And I think this is where there's, most municipalities are starting here, you know, with this, with the leaf blower legislation, so.
But it might be worth engaging Dan's name and his group to listen to what they have to say and take a proposal from them on the transition. And that might help with the optics of the town is being exempt, but is working towards transitioning as well to an electric environment.
Yeah, and I do remember talking to him because he was, he brought some of his equipment over to rec field that day. And I know a couple of concerns that we came away with, obviously, as Jerry mentioned, was the battery life on, on the equipment. I know the mower he had, I think, was the largest mower he had was either, it was either 48 or 60. I don't remember, Jerry, if you remember, but, you know, he was getting like three hours of battery life out of that mower. And I think the sticker price on it was 26 grand. You know, we're buying, you know, we just bought new equipment, and I think the 16-inch mower we bought was 12.
So I would, I would say this, I think my preference in this and the reason that I wanted to go from the 10-acre exemption back to sort of listing the exemptions is actually to try to be as inclusive and reasonable with this legislation as we can be and not to try to put too much of a burden on any one of these entities or on the town itself. That said, I think we do have to balance it with what Lisa suggested, which is that we don't want to give the sort of carte blanche to the town, but we want to be thoughtful about how does the town actually need to use it? So, you know, we know we need to use it for the tennis courts. We know we need to use it for the ball fields. We've heard you talk about the need to use it on the sidewalks. I think maybe what we need to understand, and, you know, I don't, maybe Ike, this is you going back and having a conversation with your Parks Foreman, is how onerous would it be between June 1st and September 30th not to use gas-powered leaf blowers for the maintenance of parking lots? And if the public parking lots is something where it then becomes, there is no workable alternative to maintaining those parking lots, then I think we can include parking lots as an exemption as well. At least, that's my, my feel. I don't know how other board members.
I think that's the reason that I support that.
Right, those four, those are the four items. If we can take one of those four items and not exempt it, great. If that is not doable at this point in time, so be it.
Well, I don't know that you know unless you try it, so.
So are we telling the schools they can't do their parking lots, too?
Well, they're not, they're not in session from June to September 1, so.
Well.
Well, they have.
June 1, they would be.
Well, from, I'm sorry, June 30th to September 1.
Yeah, I mean, they have, they have sports tryouts in August, but, um, I mean, assuming that's true, I think what Ivy said is works. If we can exempt parking lots, that's great. If we can't, then we won't. But if we can, that would be great. And then that would give you less work to do, too, Ike.
Yeah, it would, yeah, I mean, certainly, it would be less work on our end. It's just, it's the, you know, the overall look and what you're putting out there, so.
No matter what we do, people complain. No matter what we do, people will like it. Hopefully, more the latter than the former, but I think you should give it a try and see where it goes. Worst-case scenario, what, we de-exempt it, or we, you know, we allow you to do it, so.
Okay, so do we have a consensus?
Nick, can we revise it to, to revert back to the DPW exemption? And then in the exemption listing, include town ball fields, tennis courts, or I guess just recreation fields, tennis courts, and walkways slash sidewalks?
Yep, we'll make that change.
And parking lots.
And parking lots for now, and we'll figure out if we can remove that exemption.
Oh, okay.
And I think, I think we need, to Lisa's point, I think we need to send us to the school district and ask them for feedback on it as well. Because if we're giving ourselves this latitude, we need to be willing to give it to the school district as well.
Good, so we'll circulate a revised local law. We'll work with Rand on it.
And this was to start 2021?
It's supposed to start in October.
October, which is basically 2021.
All right, I mean, the issues that I raised before, which we have to discuss here now, but finding dollars as best we can in these tough times for people who may need this and can't afford these electric items or just bought. So I, I, I think the longer, the better because of right now, because of the economy in terms of a delay or timing, and also finding some sort of dollars to help people.
What does that mean, Jeremy? You think we're going to find dollars within the town's budget to help?
I think, I think we have to cut, rephrase that, we have to cut. I think that we're going to be reviewing a lot of things over the next year and probably longer about where we're spending money. But if we're going to ask people in town to, who may not be working, as we discussed before, or may have used a landscaper in the past and are not using a landscaper now, they're doing it on their own. If it costs a couple hundred dollars to buy one of these, these blowers, you know, that's, that's a, I want to say, a heavy lift in terms of what, you know, economically not feasible, but it's still a burden. So if we're going to impose this upon them, then October is not that far off. I think, especially if you're not working right now, and for all we know, you may not go back to work. I think that we should try to find, whether that's $5,000 or $7,500, however, we can figure out how many that equates to blowers. You know, some sort of turn-in policy, as we discussed in the past. I mean, when I say discussed, no one necessarily agreed to it, but the idea of turning in your gas blower for an electric blower and work with a local store, maybe a local store will help give discounts to people on that front as well, if they buy in bulk.
And I've had conversations a while ago with the manufacturers. At that time, they were willing to talk about that with a local store, whether an Austin Mower or somebody like that. So we might be able to work something like that out. Everyone that's a client.
I don't know either. So again, so it's not getting enacted tomorrow anyway. So we have time to look at this to see how we can make it work. But I think I made my point instead of mumbling.
And then part of the program is we're enacting this in October. And there's really an education program that's going to run, you know, through the winter, maybe even start in the summer to bring the, you know, residents up to speed on what the law is and how it's going to affect things in the trading program. If we can find one, it would be a great thing to incorporate as well.
So maybe to Jeremy's point, while we continue to work on this legislation and, you know, and, you know, make these changes and, and ga- gather some feedback from the school district, um, and then, and then continue to move this ahead. Um, looking at a potential October start date, understanding then that the, the true start date would be June first of, of twenty twenty-one when you would no longer be allowed to use the, uh, the gas-powered blowers. But understand that those are the kind of dates and, uh, milestones that we're working towards. Can the SAP begin now to think about what kind of an incentive program we could put into place concurrent with passing this legislation?
Uh, once we know what, when the program, what the program is and when it will be allowed, we're going to start, put together an education program. We'll start to look for an incentive program. But obviously, we don't have any funds or any ability to all that any type of incentives. But surely we can work on trying to get a program together.
Yeah, that, that would be great. Um, I, I know you, I know you don't have funds. Um, so I guess what, what I'm asking is if you can do sort of a little research and, and thinking around what, uh, what kinds of incentive programs, um, might already exist in other municipalities or, or, um, what you guys would, would sort of recommend in terms of working with, you know, local dealers or, or working with, directly with manufacturers, um, but what kind of a, a program? So, you know, um, I've always thought that this legislation needs to be done in tandem with education, um, and, and also this piece. So if we think about what the supporting, um, programming looks like that'll surround this legislation, I think that that, um, is important for us to be able to speak to as we're thinking about, um, about passing it, about creating one.
Yeah, most definitely Ivy and the town board. The, part of what we did when we researched this, when we started the research on this two years ago was just that, and at that time I reached out to, um, Sustainable Westchester and others and did find support throughout for trade-in programs, manufacturer programs, et cetera, to help. Uh, and they said, whenever you're ready, let me know with the stalls, um, and why should I say stalls? With the starts that we've had and the stops, uh, it's obvious that we continue that dialogue. Um, but we would be more unhappy to once we know we have, uh, legislation in place.
I'm suggesting that, um, for us to be able to, to approve this legislation, I think it's something that the town board, um, would want to know about and be able to communicate about. So not waiting until afterwards.
Okay, I'll return again.
I just, this is Jennifer Mabes. Could I just jump in here a minute? On the parking lots, I'm just trying to understand the rationale for exempting town parking lots, but not school parking lots, swim club parking lots. How do you justify the town guest to exclude it?
I think they're all should be treated the same.
Well, so we're going to follow up with the schools to see, um, to, so that they have a copy of the revised legislation and they can provide comment back to us. Um, I think the, the difference is that the town, um, the town parking lots are significant and larger than, for example, a swim club parking lot is. Um, with a much higher usage, a much greater acreage. Um, and there's also the issue of, of liability with regard to the maintenance of those public spaces. Um, so I think that's what we heard tonight and that's the reason to include those things for the town. Um, and if other entities want to come before us and argue that they have similar hardships, I suppose that they can during the public hearings. I don't, I mean, this, this is what I heard, but you know, Jill, Ike, you, you're the expert, so.
Um, you know, that, Nick, can I, can I punt to you for a moment? Because when we had this conversation generally about how we were putting together the, um, the exemptions, you indicated to me that there was, that we had the ability to approve a resolution um, that would complement the legislation. That even though the town had the exemption for the parking lot and everything else, that we would still pass a resolution that indicated our commitment to, um, still trying to, uh, live up to the letter of the law and to try our best to take and not necessarily, you know, blow our pocket parking lots on a regular basis and, and, um, you know, um, except when there's a a situation where we believe that it's, you know, uh, it's slippery, you know, we, we haven't been able to mow in several weeks and we're looking at heavy, you know, grass clippings and we're afraid there's going to be a trip and fall sort of thing. That in those situations, we would do it, but otherwise just for cosmetic and aesthetic purposes that we wouldn't. Um, can you help me out with that a little bit? I mean, how, what would that look like?
Sure, my, my suggestion was have a general carve-out so that the town is exempt, but then have the town board adopt some guidelines and allow it to be done administratively because you control your own workforce. So the town can say, even though we have this exemption, we don't want it exercised unless these situations arise. That would then allow us to grow and learn with the use of electric mo- uh, electric equipment, um, understand the process better without having to come back and amend the local law. So it, it honors the spirit and the intent, but it allows us to be a bit more practical with our learning experiences because we have large properties and, and workforces. So I would suggest it could have a blanket exemption, but at the same time, you adopt the local law, the town board would give directives to you, Jill, the administrator and staff to develop a policy that honors the, the intent of this, that there are times when it needs to be used, but the goal should be to avoid using it unless necessary.
I mean, what, what is the board's thoughts on that? Luke, one? Yes, no?
If you do it or you don't, I, I think that's wishy-washy. Either make a decision one way or another.
I mean, we can always revisit it anyway.
It's true. It's just that, that when you change a local law, it's an onerous process. As opposed to changing internal policies that you just say, you know what? You know, we're, we're, we're blowing the parking lots too much. We don't want to be doing it, you know? As opposed to, you know, making a decision, game time decision, again.
That's true.
Or determination.
I think Jennifer's point though is that you're going down a slippery slope here. When you start to allow your parking lots to be blown and not others, you're going to get a lot of public hearing about why can't I blow mine? I'm an HLA, I've got a large parking lot to do. If you can do yours, why can't I do mine? And then you start to allow that in, someone else is going to raise an exemption. How about cemetery? How about this? How about that? And the list is going to start to grow and we're going to start to battle back and forth what that list looks like. That's kind of why we ended up with the ten acre, going back to the ten acre because we couldn't manage the list until it got, uh, onerous in trying to manage the list.
Well, could you say something like, going back to the way it was, the town has exempt for, you know, the things we've enumerated, the fields, the tennis courts, et cetera, and for other public purpose exemptions, which would be broad enough that it would allow us to utilize it when we needed to, but then if we deemed something is not a public purpose, like if we don't think parking lots need to be blown, then we wouldn't blow it. Is that, is that kind of a way to meet in the middle or is that doing nothing? So it's not a blanket exemption. It's saying it's for public policy or public, public purposes.
As determined by the town administrator.
Right.
Yep. The, the answer we can come up with that way is the board's comfortable with it. We can run it anywhere the board's comfortable with.
Cause then it's not a complete blanket exemption? I don't know.
I do enjoy the fact that of all the things going on in this world, we are debating leaf blowers.
On parking lot, on empty parking lots, yes.
I mean, really, we, we are a, in a unique situation, uh, a fortunate one. Um, you know, I, I'm going back and forth in terms of, uh, on one hand, I think you just go ahead and make a decision and live with that decision. But to your point, Joe, that it could become difficult to just onerous to later fix it, would a policy be better? Um, um, I, I think, I think all of our ideas are out there. You know, we can still communicate online, online, meaning by email to update and make changes as we think that are appropriate. But, uh, I don't think it's going to be resolved tonight, um, how, how it should be because we all have a little bit different concepts and ideas, although I think we're all trying to get to the same place. Um, but I think there needs to just come a point that we pull the bandaid off and just move forward.
So, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with Lisa's suggestion. Actually, I think it was a good one. Um, if we want to try that as an alternative, um, my one thought though is that if we go down that path, um, we may want to offer the same path to the school district. Recognizing that they have the same large acreage kind of maintenance challenges that we have.
Right.
Then everything's going to be needed for public policy. If they're going to make, you know, if they're watching themselves, they're always going to say they need it.
Well, not necessarily because look, it's, if they don't have to blow at certain times, it's a lot cheaper. I, I mean, I've been there in the summer, not this summer, but, um, not this spring, but I've been there where they, it's, they've been blowing parking lots in the middle of the summer, um, with nobody there. So it's, it's got to be a cost savings for them too, not to do that. And then, and maybe it's not a public purpose then. So it, it's, yeah, it's, I, I agree with Ivy though. It's still a municipal type body. So we should give them those same, the same guidelines, I think.
SAP standpoint, we find it hard to blow hardscape as a, as a reality, um, unless it's a liability. In a lot of cases, it's not. It's a beautification.
Right.
And it's our defense. Our defense is you blow with a beautification and that you shouldn't be doing that. You're blowing for liability items. I can probably justify.
Okay, so, um, does anybody have anything else that they feel like we're, we're starting to flog a dead horse? So I think maybe the thing to do is, um, Nick, if we want to take this back and think about making a revision and maybe you can actually get with Lisa and, and get her thoughts about what that language might look like. I liked what she said, but I unfortunately did not jot it down. Uh, and if we can make that, in my opinion, make that change for both the town and the school district.
Good. So Lisa, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, I'm around all day tomorrow.
Okay.
And I, you know, in the meantime, Ike, I do think it would be, um, instructive for the town board if we had a, um, better understanding from your parks foreman about the sort of level of need that exists with regard to the parking lots during the summer months. Um, you know, it's just, just if we can get a, a better handle, uh, on that. Um, I do think that would be, um, important information for us to be able to have, kind of as we discuss this with the public at the public hearings.
Just the, how often? Where?
How, how often are you, are you doing it? What's the, what's the need for the leaf blower? And, and in, in which locations are you having to use it? Just, just sort of, if the recommendation coming from, from your department is that you need to be able to use gas-powered leaf blowers during the summer months in order to maintain the parking lots. Um, which parking lots, uh, how often are you there and, and for what reason? Just so we have some backup there.
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okey-dokey. All right. Well, that was it for our work session. So we're ready for our town board meeting.
Okay, do we need a motion to leave our work session and go into our town board meeting?
I move to adjourn the work session and commence our town board meeting.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Good evening once again. Welcome to the town board meeting for Tuesday, uh, May twelfth. I almost said July twelfth. Oh my goodness. All dates are sort of running together at this point. Um, thanks for staying on board with us, those of you who are, who are planning to stay on for our, our town board meeting. Uh, the first thing I just wanted to go through is a couple of announcements in my, uh, town supervisor's report. Um, so I will start at the top of the call with some information about, um, our town and county response to, uh, COVID nineteen. Uh, so as of, uh, May eleventh, so as of yesterday, uh, Westchester has conducted a hundred and twelve thousand tests and has had thirty-one thousand positive results. So we have now tested eleven percent of the population, understanding that some people may have received a test more than once. Uh, but that's a relatively small number there. So we, we've tested about eleven percent of the population, which is, uh, far exceeds actually any other county, uh, in, in New York State in terms of our, our testing capacity. Um, unfortunately, Westchester has had one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven fatalities. Um, and so as we start to talk about, um, how we are coming, uh, down the other side of this curve, um, we still need to be mindful of the fact that each one of these, uh, one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven fatalities is, is somebody who had a family and somebody who lived in this county and, and we, uh, absolutely mourn their loss. Um, all of that said, if we are starting to see some positive results, um, and we do believe we're on the, the downside of the, the curve, as I said before. Um, and that is due to, of course, all of the efforts of the county, of the state and of the town of Newcastle and, and our residents here. So we have much to be proud of, um, in terms of the activities and the actions that we've taken. The town unfortunately does continue to receive complaints from residents regarding both real and perceived social distancing violations. Um, and, you know, these violations are, are thoughtless and they're inconsiderate. And at the same time, we in the town of Newcastle are following the guidance from our Westchester County Executive, George Latimer, who has cautioned municipalities against criminalizing non-compliance with social distancing. So as I said, we've had success here with voluntary compliance. Our police department has responded to complaints, will respond to complaints. Um, and our chief will tell you that he has been successful in being able to break up groups of people who are not social distancing and reminding people to, to wear their masks when they're in public. If you need assistance from the police, please call the police desk two-three-eight-four-four-two-two, um, to request that assistance. But in my opinion, what I believe works best is just gentle corrections. This is really the best way to be able to influence others' behavior. Um, we're all adjusting to this new normal, to get used to having to wear face masks in public, to greeting our neighbors from across the street. And it takes practice. It takes work and sometimes we forget. But we are getting better at this and we are in this together. Um, and you know, Governor Cuomo said today in, in his address, you know, never forget what New Yorkers did here. We saved lives. And, and nowhere is that more true than, than in Newcastle. If you look at the numbers of cases that we've had um, as compared to other municipalities in Westchester County, um, and throughout the state, we have really managed to keep the numbers low here and we've done that through our vigilance. And so we need to continue to be vigilant and to be respectful and to be kind and gentle with one another. Um, wanted to mention a couple of other things. Antibody testing is happening now. Westchester County has completed antibody testing for first responders at the Westchester County Testing Site and is now beginning to test other municipal personnel, both county personnel as well as local municipal government personnel. They've conducted over two thousand tests to date at the county center. Antibody testing is now also available, uh, through Northwell at Northern Westchester Hospital and at the Center for Healthy Living at Chapel Court Crossing. This program is currently open only for first responders, uh, and DPW operations, so essential municipal workers. Um, but it will be expanded in the future. Uh, they plan to offer it for other essential workers and then eventually to be able to offer it to the broader community. So it's particularly wonderful that, um, it's right here, close to home, so right up at Chapel Court Crossing. Um, and we are, you know, we welcome this in our community and stability to, uh, expand our testing capacity for antibodies. Everyone is interested in learning more about New York Forward. So New York State PAWS is set to end on Friday, May fifteenth. Um, and as we are beginning the process of reopening, the governor has set forth different regions throughout the state. Each region must meet seven metrics before they can begin the reopening process. There are three regions that have currently qualified and when New York PAWS lifts on Friday, those three regions will begin the process of reopening. Our town and our county. Our town and our county, Westchester County, is within the Mid Hudson Region. We have currently met five of the seven metrics that we need in order to reopen. Once we've met those metrics, businesses will reopen in four phases. And slowly, so if you heard the governor speak today, he talked about slowly opening the valve and the need to wait between phases to make sure that we don't see another upswing in terms of the positive tests and the capacity of our hospitals and our ICU beds within hospitals to meet the need. Should the need arise, because what we all don't want to see is that backslide, that having to return to the social distancing, the the New York State on pause, the quarantine, and all of what we've now been sort of slowly coming out of. So if you want to learn more about New York Forward, there is a website that you can visit, forward.ny.gov. On there, you will find a detailed 50-page plan that Governor Cuomo has laid out for how we will go about reopening New York State. And you will also find a dashboard, the Regional Monitoring Dashboard, which you can look at to monitor our progress against the seven metrics that have been laid out. Again, we need to meet all seven metrics in order to begin Phase One of reopening. The town of Newcastle, in partnership with the Chapakaw Millwood Chamber of Commerce, is going to plan a virtual Town Hall event, hopefully for later this week. We're just lining up our sort of panel and make getting the the date and time set up, at which we will discuss in greater detail the New York Forward Plan and go through all seven of those metrics, all four of those phases, and help both our business community as well as our residents understand how we will proceed on our path towards reopening. But in the meantime, I highly recommend the forwardnewyork.gov, forward.ny.gov website, which has actually a great deal of of information available about what that process is going to look like. A couple of other announcements, things people hopefully are very excited about. It's it's not all bad news around here. So the recycling center is set to reopen on Tuesday, May 26. So by popular demand, the town of Newcastle will reopen our recycling center on a limited basis, starting on Tuesday, May 26. The office and the residential yard waste areas will remain closed until further notice. However, the recycling center yard will be open two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from 7:00 AM to 2:30 PM only. There will be some changes, procedural changes, as you might expect when you visit the recycling center. Four vehicles will be allowed into the yard at a time. It will be managed by a recycling staff member. And those who are waiting online to enter the yard will need to wait in their cars. We will not accept anyone walking in. You must be in a vehicle to drive into the yard. Everyone who's there must wear a mask or a face covering, and you must be able to maintain six feet of social distance between you and anyone else in the yard at all times. So we'll have some additional information about this in the e-newsletter this week. But we are very excited to be able to return this offering to our residents, as we know it's something that people have anxiously anticipated. We also, just as a reminder, are accepting orders for mulch or compost. And there's some information available on our website, mynewcastle.org, where you can find the order form and all of the information about how that program will run this year, as it's obviously, like all things, a little different than than the way it's been in years past. An update on town camp. So summer camps, our town, along with all other towns, we are still awaiting guidance from the CDC, New York State, Westchester County Departments of Health, as well as the American Camp Association, with regard to whether summer camps are going to continue this summer. If the town is allowed to offer town camp, we will do so. Our Recreation Department and Recreation Commission are really super creative. They're second to none, the work that they've done already this spring in terms of organizing daily activities that are being held online. It's it's been a blessing for parents like me to have this resource available. They want to be able to turn all of this attention and energy towards camp. So if we're able to to hold camp, we will hold camp. That said, we've already had to start to face some of the realities of what it's going to look like for us this summer. And so the the town has made the decision to cancel all camp field trips, which includes two optional trips that are traditional camp adventure, as well as the trips for the on-the-go camp. We will not be able to hold open swim and swimming and tennis lessons as well. Refunds will be issued for those cancellations. And anyone who's interested in finding out more information about this should please contact Brittany Nieder. That's B-N-E-I-D-E-R at mynewcastle.org, and you can, of course, also visit our website for more information about this. As I said, you know, to the extent that we're able to do this, we want to. But we, of course, you know, the health and safety of our campers and our kids has to be our first priority. And the last announcement for me is about tennis. So anybody who's been following the announcements from the governor this week heard that at the end of this week, when New York State Pause is lifted, certain low-risk industries are allowed to come back statewide. So before you meet those those seven metrics and progress to the the four phases, there are three things specifically that the governor has said can come back now. Those three things include landscaping, drive-in movies, and low-risk recreational activities such as tennis. We don't know what the other low-risk recreational activities are. They have not been defined, but tennis has been specifically called out. So with that said, the town is reopening our public tennis courts at Millwood Park. There are two courts there. And these are actually the only municipal courts in the town of Newcastle. We've had a lot of questions from people about when we're going to reopen courts. Like I said, we have one park with two courts. Those are the only things that are under municipal control. So there are other courts at private private tennis clubs. There's the courts at Horace Greeley High School, which are closed. We do not have authority over those courts. So the Millwood Courts will be open. And there's some additional information about the hours for that. We're going to reserve hours before 11:00 AM for senior citizens. There will be a sign-up sheet at the courts themselves, and people can sign up for one-hour time slots on a first come, first served basis, limited to singles play, of course, and also limited to Newcastle residents due to the demand we're expecting. So hopefully, that's good news for those of you who are tennis players and looking forward to to the summer season. So that's all of the updates that I have. Sorry, I spoke for a long time. Jill Shapiro, do you have anything for the Administrator's Report?
I do. Thank you. Um, so um, I'm here to announce that our DPW is fully back to work. The first of the drainage projects to be started is the project on Roaring Brook Road. Work started today, Tuesday, May 12th, with Roaring Brook Road being closed between Cross Ridge Road and Hunting Ridge Road. That's for today and tomorrow. 7:30 until 5:00. They're replacing a drain pipe that runs under the road. And they're taking advantage of the fact that there are no school buses to be inconveniencing, and the traffic is minimal. The there is a detour that's set up. It's going to continue through the duration of the closure that directs drivers around through Cross Ridge Road, Shady Lane, and Hunting Ridge Road. This is part one of the two-part drain pipe replacement project along Roaring Brook Road. A similar road closure is planned for Thursday, this Thursday, the 14th. Also on Roaring Brook Road by Alpine Lane, and residents should look out for another code red alerting them to the upcoming projects and the traffic disruptions and detours. This is the first of several major drainage projects that have been slated for this year. We apologize in advance for the inconvenience these major infrastructure projects cause, and we thank everybody for their patience. In addition to the drainage work, the water main replacement project along Dogwood Road in Kisco Park will resume by the end of the month. Construction of the playground and basketball court will resume at the rear of Town Hall. There's about eight weeks' worth of work to complete the project. Our contractor has been notified that he can resume work as this is a municipal project and municipalities have been exempt from the extra from the construction restraints. As long as he complies with the provisions of the executive, the governor's executive orders, which includes workplace distancing, and the employees must wear face masks or coverings at all times. We've also been alerted that the MTA is going to have some disruptions a little bit further up the line. They informed us that on Friday, May 15th, Harlem Line service between Southeast and Wausau stations will be suspended for a day to accommodate the Patterson Bridges replacement project. And there'll be no train or substitute busing at that time. So if for those people that are heading well north of us, they should just be alerted. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Had to unmute myself.
Oh, sorry.
So just before we move on to public comment and new business, since we're in this new format, I've just been sort of checking in with other Town Board members if anyone has any announcements that they want to make.
Ivy, just have a quick question about the recycling center. Is um, if the food scrap program going to start again on 5/26, or is that not included in that?
So so drop-offs are going to be um, welcome. It's just that the the bags, the replacement bags, are going to be available at Greeley Hardware on in Chapakaw and also Millwood Hardware. They'll be selling those. And there'll be a full notification, I believe, that comes out tomorrow in the e-newsletter. And it's probably online as well, but there are, because the office is going to be closed, they won't be selling those 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 supplies. But the drop-off is is there, and people can drop off food waste.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I actually had not understood that when I read the the announcement, so.
We should make sure. Yeah, we should make sure that's clear. That's a that was a biggie.
It's good news. I mean, you know, that's another thing that people have been, as you know, Lauren.
Very and very patiently. Thank you. We we so appreciate it.
Great. So now we have come to the portion of our Town Board meeting that is dedicated to public comment and new business. I'll check first with Christina Papes. Christina, have we received any public comments in advance?
No, I have not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any comments in our Zoom chat?
I don't see anybody on YouTube. If anybody's interested that is attending, there's a virtual hand that you can raise if you're interested in speaking.
Not you, Jeremy. I did see that we had one chat question that came in as to whether there's a a town in Westchester that has a lower per capita positive case rate. And I assume that that refers to the COVID-19 positive test results. So we have not actually been released that information by Westchester County. They have not done that level of analysis to compare population with the the number of positive test results. Certainly, somebody could do that using publicly available data. But that has not been reported by the county. And I think the reason that has not been reported by the county is that we know and we have known for a long time that those positive test results are not necessarily reflective of the true spread of the the virus within our community. We all know of people, I certainly do, who had the disease, knew that they had the disease, were told by their doctors, especially during the early days when when tests were not broadly available the way they are right now, but that they should isolate and stay home. You know, moved through their family. They all recovered, never went to the hospital, never showed up in our in our positive results. So, you know, we've always known that the data is 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 tricky. And so I suspect that that's the reason that that kind of granular data has not been made available. But like I said, certainly, an enterprising person with time on their hands could take a look at what those numbers are that Westchester County publishes by community and compare it to the, you know, American Community Survey. This is information to find that out.
Still no hands. If anybody, you can also type in the chat box in case your hand, you don't know where the virtual hand is.
I actually have one last thing while we're waiting. And that is that the Water Quality Report, the annual Water Quality Report, should be in everyone's home by May 31st. This is the annual Water Quality Report that Westchester County Department of Health requires us to issue every year. That will be coming along with lots of other information. Really adorable census flyer that we hope grabs everybody's attention and urges you to answer the census if you haven't yet so far. Also, important information regarding our parking permit season, which has been extended into through the fall. And a couple of other very important MS4 and stormwater reports that we hope you'll we'll we hope you'll be through. So you should just look for that. Thanks.
Okay, still no response, so I think we're okay.
Okay. So the next part of our agenda is we have a public hearing. So we have a public hearing tonight on our local law regarding walls. So can we get a motion to open the public hearing? I moved. Second. All in favor. Nick, can you give us an overview of the legislation?
Can. I believe Bob Sciolli is on the line, and this is technical, so I'm going to refer more to Bob, but I will state procedurally, this is the Town Board's first public hearing on this local law. It was reviewed at a workshop. It was referred to Westchester County Planning Board, who said it's a matter of local concern. They had no comment. It was also reviewed last week by the Town Planning Board, who supported it. They reviewed, discussed it, recognized that it was helpful, and are in support of a local law being adopted. And Bob, if you're on the line, if you can sort of walk us through, because this is a technical local law.
Good evening, everyone. I was involved with basically focusing on the really clarification and edification on the retaining wall heights, because in my experience over the past many, many years with the town, there was always seemed to be some confusion about the actual retained wall height and the exposed retaining wall height when it comes to structural design. So I did a bunch of research on this and tried to just clarify, I guess, for once and for all to, I guess, builders and contractors. And even people that live in town, the importance behind the difference between the retained wall height and the exposed retaining wall height. Because years ago, everyone would say, well, the wall's not more than four feet high. However, if you really look into it, when you're doing the design on a wall, the retained wall height is only from actually from the top of the wall to the bottom of the footing, which isn't taken into account when you say four feet. In this part of the country, the foundation should be at least three feet, three and a half feet down. So really, when people would say, well, my wall's only four feet in an exposed height, really, for structural calculations and design purposes, the wall was six to seven feet tall. So I just wanted to really clarify that in the code. So I did a bunch of research on it, and I studied this in college as well. So basically, it's important to realize the differences between the two. So really, basically, what I recommended at the end of my memo, I don't want to go into every little detail. It's four pages and bore the board with all the details, but basically, to make a long story short, at the end, I recommended that the any wall that's basically less than 24 inches in exposed height, which is basically the elevation from the bottom of the grade to the top of the grade, would not need plans prepared by an engineer or an architect. And so just for clarification purposes, too, I recommended they put a definition in the code, which explains the different the definition of exposed retaining wall height. And pretty much I'll read it verbatim in the what I found online is it is the vertical distances measured from the finish grade at the bottom of the wall, which is the lower soil grade, to the finish rate at the top of the wall. So basically, when people have questions generally about walls, I think it's an easy way to go for clarification, so everyone has a good understanding on what the actual retained wall height is, where years ago, there was really no rhyme or reason on how they came up with this. So I did this for clarification purposes, and hopefully, I believe it was incorporated into the code. And that's pretty much what I focused on in my memo and recommendations to council on the town.
Okay, Bob, thank you.
Okay.
So do we have any public comments on our proposed change to the code regarding wall heights?
I have not received any.
I want to thank you, Bob, for helping me get a little bit smarter. You know, it's a relative term. I don't think I'm prepared to build a wall right now or anything. But but thank you. Thank you. This is with Lincoln Logs.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I don't see anyone on YouTube or chat or raising their hand.
Okay, so what's our next step here, Jill?
To close the public hearing. To close the public hearing. And so we would need a motion for that, and it would be up to the board as to whether or not they would want to hold it open for any public comment. I don't think that a technical law of of this nature. Is going to receive any additional comment if they haven't thus far. So I would just ask for a motion to close the public.
So moved, so moved.
All in favor?
And then we would be, right, and it's actually on for approval in the resolution, so. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. It's nice to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see everyone. It's been a while.
Funny where you are, nice and blue skies.
Yes, yes. Well, that's, thanks to my daughter. She's my IT specialist. She sets all this up.
If you join our department head meetings, he's usually walking in the woods, so we're sort of used to this very. Very nice job.
But in a, in a tie.
Yes, in a tie, yes, shirt and tie.
I'd like to be presentable, the same way it would be if I was there in person, so.
Okay, so Jill, do we have anything else before we move into our resolutions?
Nope, I don't. Christina, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Okay, right.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Bye bye, thank you.
Okay, Jason, you want to kick it off? You're in my top left-hand corner.
Sure thing. I moved to accept the following monthly reports for April twenty twenty, the town clerk, the court clerk, the development department, and the receiver of taxes.
Second. All in favor?
I move to adopt the following sets of town board minutes. April fourteenth, twenty twenty work session town board meeting, April twenty first, twenty twenty work session, and April twenty eighth, twenty twenty town board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to adopt the following resolution, whereas the the board. The town board sits as the board of the Newcastle Stanwood Water District, the two Water Castles Water District. And the High Ridge Water District collectively collectively referred to as Water Districts. Whereas the water bills are issued to the town residents on a quarterly basis, such that they receive four bills a year. The town mails out these bills in three separate sections to, sections of the town at different times. Such that the town is transmitting one water bill each month. Whereas in light of COVID nineteen, town residents have encountered financial hardships and difficulty in accessing mail bills and in contacting Town Hall. And whereas the board has the ability to and wishes to offer relief to the residents. Now therefore be it resolved that the town controller is authorized to waive any penalties. For bills that are, that become due March, April, or May twenty twenty, and that such bills may be paid without penalty. Within ninety days of the due date, and be it further resolved that any bill not paid within the, within ninety-one days. After its due, after its due date, and which had a due date occurring in March, April, or May twenty twenty. Will thereafter be assessed the late penalty as set forth in the town's fee schedule of a one-time late penalty fee of ten percent. And be it further resolved that for the sake of clarity, the town board notes it is, has not authorized the waiver of late penalties for any bill issued. Prior to March twenty twenty that became due and is in arrears.
Second.
All in favor? Lauren, you want to take over?
I move to authorize the adoption of the Recreation and Parks, Parks Fee Schedule as amended regarding special events.
All in favor?
I move to authorize the contractual change in Employment Cost Index, ECI, based upon the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Under the Suez Contract to be increased by two point seven percent, in which the proposed monthly compensation would be eighty-nine thousand, one hundred nine dollars and sixty-two cents. For the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixteen cents for the Hudson Hills Sewer Pumping Station. And four hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents for the Pleasantville Meter Pit.
Second. All in favor?
I move to adopt a local law to create chapter ninety-six of the Code of the Town of Newcastle. And amend chapter sixty, one oh eight, one thirteen, one twenty-one, and one thirty-seven concerning the reimbursement of professional review fees.
Second. All in favor?
Lisa?
Okay, I move to adopt a local law to amend chapter sixty, section two-ten and two-forty. Subsection C five of the Code of the Town of Newcastle concerning the construction of walls.
Second.
All in favor?
I move to approve the proposal from Barton and Loguji.
Logujius.
Logujius. I can't pronounce it, thank you, for the preparation and submission of the twenty twenty consolidated funding application, CFA. And twenty twenty congestion mitigation air quality grant application for a lump sum in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Can we do this subject to approval of council as to form and substance, please?
Subject to approval of council as to form and substance.
Thank you.
Only because you said please, second.
All in favor?
Jason, you want to go? I mean, Jeremy?
Sure, I moved to set up public here regarding a local law to amend chapter ninety of the town.
We're not doing that one.
I just read, my apologies.
No, 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 you're right. We should have struck it.
I I move to authorize the posting and advertising of three temporary summer help positions within the Highway and Water Unit of the Department of Public Works.
Second.
All in favor?
And I moved to authorize the hiring of Anthony Toronto to the position of student intern within the Development Department. In a total amount of one thousand, five hundred dollars for six weeks to be effective upon completion of his current semester.
Second.
All in favor?
And I believe now I can move, move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?